This conference will now be recorded.
No problem. It's 3 o'clock and the Churchill County Library Board of Trustees' regular board meeting will come to order. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we are to our first public comment in the meeting. Is there anybody that is here that would like to make a public comment? Hearing none. We'll go for a roll call of members. Do you want to start as Maddie?
Maddie Serna.
Jessica Rowe.
Ryan Swarzick.
And we have Sari online, is that correct?
Yes, Sari Kaler.
Okay. And Pam, did we get Sue?
No Sue at this point, but I'll let you know if she pops on.
All right, thank you so much. All right, so verification of the posting of the agenda?
Pam Moore, for the record, the agenda was posted on June 20th between the hours of 3:00 and 5:00 at the locations listed on the agenda in accordance with statutes.
Thanks Pam. So, we are ready for consideration and possible action regarding the approval of the agenda as submitted or revised?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. The one thing that I did notice is we don't have our regular agenda item for the setting of the next meeting. We should probably be able to handle that. I'm sure it's just an oversight, but otherwise everything...
It is number 10.
It is number 10. Did I miss it? Oh, we do have it on there, we just don't have the date. Excellent. Thanks for calling that out Pam. All right, so we have the motion and second on the table. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. The motion carries. Excellent. All right, so the next step would be the consideration and possible action regarding the approval of the minutes for the meeting held on May 22nd, 2025. Does anybody have any discussion on those minutes that they would like to cover? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Thanks Ryan.
I'll second that.
Thanks Maddie. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. The motion carries. All right, so it is time for the Library Board of Trustees' report. I think I'll start us off a little bit on this one and then we'll move on to anybody else that wants to weigh in. I had two items that I wanted to prize. It's been a complicated week. More of that will be handled later in the agenda, but I just wanted to give a shout out to the staff of the library for their even keel and their ability to get through this week very well and to work together in a cohesive way and to serve our public. I really appreciated that clarity and communication from them and I think that they deserve to have that recognition. And then the other thing that I wanted to give a little shout out to was that I was able to do the follow-up on the strategic plan that we'd approved in the last meeting and they'd prepared a match with those tent poles of focal points and the surveys from the public and the public responses and then what responses they were going to take in and make them into action. And I felt that that was a very intentional and strategic process and I thought that it reflected our community very well. So I was really grateful for that insight as well. Does anybody else want to add anything to the report?
I would like to add that we had our CLA meeting on Monday and we, the CLA has chosen to put off books, bites and beverages to a later date. That was the main thing we discussed there. I also wanted to give a shout out to the summer reading kickoff program that the library did. I think it was either June 7th or June 8th. My son and I went to it and the staff, the volunteers, you guys all, the library staff and volunteers all did a remarkable job. My son was really excited about the police car that was there and I can't remember the police officer's name that was there, but he was outstanding too, giving us the ins and outs of the police car and he even let my son sit in the front seat. Not touch anything, but sit in the front seat. So that was very, very well received by my son and it made my daughter a little bit jealous, so, because she wasn't able to attend.
Thank you, Sari. I appreciate that shout out. I know that that program has been very, very popular and I know that the work that goes into it is gratefully received by the ones that are participating there. Is there anything else that we'd like to add to the trustees' report before we move on to the director's report? All right, so we'll move on to the next item. Representing the director's report today, we have Jay Hodnett from the library. She's our Child Services Librarian and she's joining us online. Are you ready Jay?
I am.
All right.
I just wanted to say that the program that Sari was talking about, we had about 130 people come, so that was a really successful event from our perspective. We've had about 420 people sign up for summer reading so far and about 70 haven't picked up their registration bags, so that means we have, you know, more than three-quarters are active, what we would call active readers right now. And those that haven't picked up their registration bags yet will get a reminder next week. And last year we had 401, so we've surpassed signups from last year, so excited about that. And then I just wanted to give an update on, we're at about $1,700 for Hoopla this month, which is on track for less than $2,000, which is what we were kind of going for. And we've seen about the same amount of checkouts. So that's been really exciting that people aren't stopping checking out books. They're still finding what they need and it doesn't seem like they've really noticed a change, so that's really good. And then my last thing is we have about $120 that needs to be spent by the end of the fiscal year. The order's ready to go and it's a purchase that Kathy approved, but I didn't want to go ahead and order that without alerting anyone since the charge will show up this week. So there's going to be about a $120 charge that comes through this week for collection development and then we'll be done with the money from the state on that. And if you have any questions, let me know.
I apologize, I needed to turn my mic on. Joe, we don't need to do, if that purchase and that expenditure was already approved by supervisor, we don't need to weigh in on that one, do we?
No.
So it's information only. Excellent. Excellent. Thanks so much Jay. I know we'll be continuing to use you as we get through some of these items, so I'll save some of that for a little bit later. Is there anything else that you, that we have questions about or would like to ask in that report? Okay.
Sorry, I did have one more thing.
Okay.
To just be back on what Sari said about books, bites and beverages being postponed. The board had originally decided that we could close early that day to set up for books, bites and beverages, and I don't know if we want to leave that and use it for professional development or just, you know, be open regular hours, but that's something to consider.
I appreciate you bringing that up Jay. To my understanding, we had made that adjustment to hours in support of that event. I have no problem, you know, reading that motion that we'd made in that way and letting it just follow the event to when it's postponed to and close early on the day that books, bites and beverages is going to re-nestle. But does anybody else feel like they need to consider something different? Or any concerns?
That sounds good to me Jessica, it makes sense.
Right. Okay. And then professional development is always something that is worth considering and would be something that would maybe be grounds for another motion because it would be of a different kind, but we'd be happy to hear that. I know that we'd love to support that for all of you and all of the staff.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for reminding me of that and for helping take care of that so that we were in place. On the next agenda item, we have the approval of the monthly budget reports for May 2025. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about that or Jay, if you have any insight that you need to give us on that that we need to prize?
You've skipped over a couple of items.
Oh, did I?
Yeah. You've got, or at least one, the setting of the date of the meeting.
Oh, yes I did. And I did that last time too. And I apparently can't even see that item coming through without help, so thank you so much for keeping me honest. We do need to set the date and time of our regular library board meeting. Our regular board meeting would usually come on the 24th of July 2025. Does anybody have any conflict for that time?
No, I'm good on the 24th.
Sari, do you have any problems with it?
Nope, I'm good on the 24th.
All right, so we'll just proceed with setting the date and its regular time. And then, now we can talk about the budget. Anybody have any questions about the budget? I'm hearing no questions, but I'm also letting people kind of get in place. I didn't see anything that raised a concern for me. It looked very much like what we had expected. So, hearing no questions, I'm happy to approve a motion, or hear a motion to approve the monthly budget report.
I move to approve the monthly budget report.
Thank you Maddie.
I'll second the motion.
I will second it.
We had two. I'll take Ryan's second on this one Sari, but thank you so much. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, the motion carries. And second is like unto it, we have a consideration and possible action regarding approval of the library gift fund report for May 2025. Does anybody have any questions on that? Or Sari, do you have any insights that we need to consider on this one?
No, I don't.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, so hearing none, I am happy to hear a motion on the approval of that report.
I'll move to make a motion to approve the library gift fund report for May 2025.
Okay, so we have a motion from Ryan. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Thank you Sari. We have a second from Sari. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. The motion carries. All right, so item C, we have consideration and possible action regarding the approval of the amended Churchill County Library patron registration application. Jay, do you have some insight on this item for us that you'd like to share?
Sure. So the only addition really is that we're telling people that we're going to email them and that we're likely going to send them print mail as well if they don't have an email address. So this is just something we'd wanted to put in place for a long time so we can go ahead and add new people to our email list. They can get a welcome email and some more information and things like that. They can unsubscribe anytime. And then also, we're mailing out, you know, if they have finds or overdue books or things like that, we'll be mailing those out.
Does anybody have any questions on the changes? They seemed straightforward. Or did anybody have any concerns about the language? I'm hearing none. And like I said, when I looked at it, it seems straightforward, what you're looking for, and it seems like a practical addition. So I'm happy to hear a motion on the approval of that.
I move to approve the amended Churchill County Library patron registration application.
Thank you Maddie. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a second from Ryan. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. The motion carries. All right, so now we are to item D, consideration and possible action regarding the notice of resignation of the Churchill County Library Director and discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of an interim director for the Churchill County Library. We have Kim from the county and HR to kind of help us a little bit here. Would you like to talk us through it?
Thank you Chair and Board Members. I am Kim Bronsima from Churchill County Human Resources for the record. I received the resignation from our library director Kathy Thorson on June 19th, effective immediately. And we have in front of you the decision to appoint somebody as an interim director. And so I would just like to bring that before you, have some discussion and see how you want to direct us on that.
Right. I think that this is a place where we could have some discussion. I think that if there are questions, we can try to work through them. But from what you described to me when you talked to me about this, you have a protocol that you would use that is similar to the protocol that you put in place previously, that you, from the county's angle, would approach some people from within the county if possible to find an interim and then move to other qualified people that could take on an interim supervisory role to help us bridge the gap while we do a full and fulsome hiring process.
We do not have anybody from within the county at this time that's able to take on that role.
I appreciate that update. And so, in consideration of that, since we don't have anybody that is coming in from internal, next steps on an interim director position, somebody to kind of help maintain the stable operations of the library. What path or track are you planning to take as you seek this and what support do you need?
So Madam Chair, this is Joe Sanford for the record. I just want to give a little advice in terms of, this is the board's decision. You have full control over the director position and so the county is, I think, willing to assist in that direction and follow the board's decisions on how you would like to proceed. Previously, we've had, when we had a situation like this, the county tried to find someone who would be able to fill that in a temporary fashion that was a known quantity and reliable and then brought that to this board. In this particular case, I think we've reached out to several people to determine whether or not they were able to take on that role. You know, unfortunately, this is a relatively important and time-consuming operation and so they were not able to just do that at this time. And so what I would, I think, recommend to this board is if you have someone that you have in mind, you can either reach out to them personally and then bring them to the board for that same decision, or you can provide names that you would like us to reach out to, or alternatively, you could put out to current library staff or current county employees the opportunity that, not for the director position, but for the interim position, to say, is there anyone internal that would have an interest in the interim position? Obviously, we haven't talked to every county employee to say that that is something that's an option before we've had an opportunity to hear from the board. And so, as you consider your options, ultimately you have almost entire control on what you would like to do. Today doesn't have to be the final decision that you appoint a particular person. It can just be, you know, this is how you would like to see us proceed in assisting you. We'll continue to consider on our end if we can find someone and bring them to you, but in the event that we don't have somebody in mind, the board is more than able to reach out to its own sources as well, as well as anyone in the public.
I appreciate that Joe, and I appreciate the advisement because this is a situation that we are navigating in real time as well. I was going off of the one conversation we have been able to have, right? And so the direction that we had, that you had, you and Jeff Weed had put in front of me and given the update that you've given me, I mean, it doesn't sound like that has panned out in the way that you had hoped. All right, so that leaves us with a couple of things that we could do here, but we're going to need to discuss how we would like to proceed. You look like you wanted to say something there Maddie.
Yes, Maddie. I was, there are a lot of details I don't have about this, so it's just an idea that I'm putting out there, but I did think, you know, who are the current school district librarians? They, you know, might have some free time at this juncture and I just thought that there might be a suitable candidate there.
I appreciate that. I think we've got a variety of people that could maybe assist us here. I think that where we're going to need to be interested as a board is probably in the process of how we're going to approach this. So it sounds like we have the purview to do some outreach, to bring some people in that we think that might be good fits for that, but we will likely need, if we are going to be the mechanism to choose them, we're going to need another meeting and we're going to need to choose a person to help us bridge the gap. This person is not going to be the director, doesn't need to hold all of the things that we're going to need to have for the director, but will need to be able to provide supervisory oversight for the library. So what I'm hearing from Joe is that we could solicit from current library staff to see if anybody is available. I know that we are short-staffed at the library and that might put a strain, but if there is somebody that's available, we can encourage that they let us know that they're able to do that because from internal, they might have some, they have knowledge of day-to-day that would be useful here. I think that Maddie has given us an avenue of consideration and we can do direct outreach in that way, certainly. What other mechanisms do you think that we could use? What other considerations do you have or questions?
Could we advertise an interim director for like a week and then schedule a meeting the following week?
I think we certainly could. I think we could put out an open call, but...
Absolutely.
Yeah.
In that sort of situation, I would expect to have a open call for a week and then probably the agendized item the week after so that we would have some materials to provide to you at the end of the open call, but yes.
I think, I think that putting out that open call to see who is willing and available would be an assist to both the county and to the board. I think the thing that we need to make sure that we are being cautious of is that we don't want to roll this too long or get too into the weeds with this process. We really need somebody to kind of help us bridge and hold things stable while we go through the hiring process responsibly for the permanent director position. I think that one of the things that we could as a board consider is who is point of contact for the results of that call and how we would like to vet or prize those people, but I think that we are in agreement that there are some qualifications that we would appreciate here and supervisory qualification would be one of those. Do you have any advisement from the viewpoint of HR for mechanisms that would make it harder or more simple for you?
I just, I think it would be a good idea to define what their responsibilities would be and then have clear on any compensation that would be involved as well.
So, a definition of responsibilities, compensation and qualifications. This is something that we will probably need to approve as a board, which means that we will need to have a special meeting and we will need to have it relatively soon because, or actually, Joe, does the agenda item give us enough latitude to do that now?
Your agenda item is giving you latitude to determine how you want to do that.
Okay. That, do you feel comfortable as a board providing Kim with a definition of the responsibilities of that role? Or would you, Kim, feel comfortable from what you know from the job description that we had posted, or as you have approached other county members, how you have been describing this position, to give us a clear set? Or would you need more time?
I think it would be helpful if maybe we could recess for a moment and I could get the job description for y'all to look at and we could edit that. And then that way we don't have to rethink what qualifications we need.
I appreciate that call. I think for me, a recess seems appropriate if we can take it. As much as we can use this meeting for, so that we can be as timely as possible and give the library that support as soon as we can, I think that it becomes really necessary to give the staff there that support. So let's go ahead and take a, how long do you need? Do you need 10 minutes or, all right, we're going to take a 10-minute recess. Do you need 10 minutes or, all right, we're going to take a 10-minute recess.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
...these responsibilities. I think that one of the purviews that we could take the opportunity to do today would be to define some of the things that we think are the most important here, that we need this interim person to do. Keeping some of this as described and as arises, right, because that's a supervisor's purview as we come to do this sort of thing, but not look for every aspect of this. And I also think that as we consider the qualifications of somebody that might be willing to come in and serve and use their relationship knowledge and any of those other pieces that might be really good fits, but they might say, "I'm not a masters of library science," or "I don't have these other qualifications. This is more of a job," letting us keep some of these things more discretionary towards fit and individual, too, right? Because we might have somebody coming in that has excellent supervisory capacity that may or may not have experience with, directly with, a county library, right? But I'm going to, now that we're back on record, I know that the other trustees have questions and ideas on this, and I want to have this conversation in an open way. So, let's open it up a little bit. I know you had some.
So, question I have, I guess it would be for Joe, is that could the board vote for Kim to be the person to accept all the applications and pick the interim director if we give her the authority to do so?
So, yes. I mean, my advice in that case would be instead that you have Kim receive all of the applications, make best judgment determination of who would be the best fit, and provide that single candidate to the board for confirmation.
Correct. Same sort of mechanism if the board wanted to look at maybe the top two or three, right?
That's correct.
Correct. Okay. Kim, do you feel like you have the capacity to put out the call, receive responses to that call, vet some applications for us?
Yes, I can do that.
All right. I don't want to put anything on you that you're not prepared to take on. Did you have anything that you wanted to add in to the record, Maddie?
I would be interested in the top two or three candidates, as opposed to just a single candidate. I think that's all I've got right now.
Sari, I know you're out online. Do you have questions or comments or discussion points that you want to bring in on this process?
Yes, I do. I was wondering, and I guess this goes into the next item, but I, since this is just an interim position, I was wondering how long it would be for, because I think with the job application, our applicants need to know how long this interim position would be for. So, if we were to get somebody from the school district library or whatever, they wouldn't be in two months, oh nuts, it's time for school to start. How am I going to manage both? So, I don't know if that's a possibility, if we could include that.
I appreciate that comment, Sari. One of the concerns that I have, it's always the danger of taking on an interim, because the search itself is going to take at the very barest amount, six weeks, for the posting alone, right? And then we're going to have to vet the application. So, I would imagine we'll be in September at earliest.
I would agree.
Right, because we need to do a national search, as we've done before. So, we're looking easily at the month of July, the month of August, and possibly even the month of September, if we identify a candidate that we like, offer the job to, and they accept that offer, right? So, there's a period of time that we're looking for here. But to define that period of time tightly is probably going to be too much. It straightjackets us, just in case that search needs to be run again or left open for longer.
Right.
But you're right, that does kind of put a hurt on anybody that has fall responsibilities. And so, being open about that as people approach is probably a good thing. What other concerns or comments might you have? I want to make sure that we're covering you.
A big concern is if we find somebody internally, I, that's a huge concern for me, because I internally, like within the library, I feel like we are short-staffed right now, and I would hate to have to cut into hours to fulfill that interim position. So, I'm not phrasing this very well, but I just, I don't want to affect the library, the library's hours by looking too close internally. And I also want to be able to help the library as much as possible. So, just those different wonders going on in my head. How can we do this in the most beneficial way for everybody out there?
I appreciate that comment, and it's a concern that I've had as well. I know that we're short-staffed in the library, and that everybody that's in the library is working at their capacity and beyond. They're doing beautifully with it. I also trust our librarians to know their capacities. And so, I'm comfortable putting out that open call, putting out the invitation that if anybody from the library wants to put in for that, that internal voice will receive our attention and some priority, because they will know from the inside some of these things that I think that we need, and they can make their case as to how they can balance that. But, that ultimately, we're putting out a call, because nobody isn't necessarily jumping up and down and saying, "Please pick me, pick me," yet. We'll put out, and we will request that, and if they, you know, if they listen to their head and their heart and think, "Yeah, I want to give it a shot," that is admirable, and we love that. But we are also looking for somebody to help support. So, we'll put out to the community and think about that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Would you mind if I tried to get Dr. Sue Segura on the phone? She's having problems connecting to go to.
Sure.
But I could try to get her on the phone, and she could participate that way?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't realize that she was trying to get in, so by whatever means you feel like you have.
Tried a couple of means to help her, and it's not working. So, I just happened to think about maybe being able to call her.
Okay. Would you like us to pause for a second while you do that?
Yes, please.
All right.
What did I do with her number? Okay, that didn't work. Why is it not doing it? Huh. Probably needs a setting changed on the phone, and I forgot my cellphone, so I can't do that either. Do you want to use it? Do you want to just do it over there, Joe, and I can give you a number?
We can hear you, Sue. Can you hear us well?
Yeah, I can hear you.
All right.
I'm sitting on my mom's front porch. It's 110 degrees.
Oh, goodness. Well, just to catch you up on the agenda item that we are trying to work with here, we are looking at solutions to find an interim director for the library to help us bridge and support the library while we do the hiring process for the new director. We have boiled it down to using a generalized form of the job description to describe to whoever's coming in what they're in for, to put out an open call for the period of a week into the community, to encourage anybody that is listening to the meeting and caring about the library to think about people that might be a good fit and turn them towards us. Point of contact will be HR. That will be who will be receiving the expressions of interest here. I don't know that we need a full application packet, more of an expression of interest, that if internally we have librarians or staff from the library that are interested in this call, we encourage them to go ahead and let us know that. Otherwise, we are looking for a good fit, somebody that would work well with our library, support them well, and be able to help us bridge during this complicated time, so that we can maintain stable operations of the library. HR will vet those expressions of interest, and the current suggestion is that they bring back to us the top two or three candidates to a special meeting date yet to be set, but will have to happen soon. Does that feel... Did I miss a step?
No.
Okay. Now, go ahead.
All right.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm not sure that I can do that whole thing again.
No, just to summarize.
All right, so...
We're going to open it up and see if anybody in the community is interested, and possibly bring back the top two that we had before. Is that what I understood?
Correct. We're going to put out an open call for people that are interested in filling the role of interim director.
I think that's a great idea. I've got a couple people that, once you put that out, I'll contact them with some library experience.
Okay. Go ahead and contact them, and put them towards Kim and HR in the county. Have them express their interest, and we'll take it from there. What do you need from your interested candidates?
So, I would like to see an application that would make it easier for me to vet the candidates.
Okay. One of the things I'm trying to avoid as we do this is discouraging somebody that might be a good fit, because, a good fit for what we need right now, because they feel like they are not necessarily of a qualification that would make them full library. I think for an application, a cover letter expressing interest, so that we can get a consideration of their writing skills and their personality and their motivations. I would be happy to see a resume, if they have a current resume, so that I can see what their education and experiences are. What else would you like to see from an HR angle that would help you feel supported?
I will just give one word of caution, which is that if you create an application, that application, when it comes to this board, will become a public record, and that sometimes discourages people from applying. So, I mean, this is an interesting case, because we aren't truly searching for a job, and I understand that we're putting some pressure on Kim to bring back top candidates. And I think maybe the correct way to phrase this instead is that we'll do the open call, we'll receive whatever expressions of interest there are, and then we'll bring candidates back to you that are reasonably connected to this in her discretion. I don't want to make it sound like we're reviewing applicants for their qualifications. Just, the idea is...
Is it the letter of interest?
The letter of interest there, I think, can tell people, hey, if you wrote a one sentence saying, "I'd be willing to do it," that may be enough to differentiate you from someone who wrote a letter of interest saying, "This is what I'd be willing to do, and here's why I'm willing to help." And that might be something that people are much more willing to accept as a public record than drafting a new resume and something like that.
So, for the record, just in case we can't hear Sue from the phone, we had two comments come in from Dr. Sue, and she had said that a letter of interest might be a good fit for this, and then a request of the timeline. We're looking to put that open call out for the space of a week. We want to move as quickly as we responsibly can in order to get some support to that library, because in the meantime, in the interim, the library's staff are taking it upon themselves to maintain stable operations, and we need to find someone that can provide them with additional support. So, from the time that the open call goes out, my guess is that, is tomorrow too soon? Is Monday reasonable, once we determine?
We can run it tomorrow.
Okay. So, from tomorrow forward, so Friday to Friday, that would be the period of time for the call. I think that that gives to us the need to meet Monday or Tuesday of the week following the holiday, so that we can do this.
To have that agendized, it would have to be, if you were going to close Friday, first posting would potentially be Monday morning, which would put Thursday as the...
The nearest time.
The nearest date.
Okay.
I would, for the board's, I guess, understanding my intention, and I think what I would advise to Kim if we're doing this open call is the exact same process we use for open calls for board members, which is that same exact expression of a letter of interest with whatever supporting information that you wish to have considered. You all filled it out, so you'll be familiar with that process.
Yeah.
If there are multiple people who express an interest, which I certainly hope, but in that situation typically, what we would do is have just phone calls, short phone calls with each member or each person who's expressed an interest, to, you know, take five, 10 minutes of their day and understand why they want to. It's not a big interview, just an understanding of who they are, if we don't know them personally already. But that is the process I would envision for this matter. If it is something that becomes, hey, we have 10 people who are all highly qualified, then in that case, Kim doesn't have to bring you just one person and say, "I've made that decision." We can always come and say, "Look, we've gotten much more interest than expected. This is the situation. How would you like us to proceed?" And that could be done at that same meeting.
Okay.
Well, I think we need to do as much output, you know, upfront to the community. You know, we need to have it in both of the newspapers. It needs to be on the website, so people know what happened, and we're looking for somebody for an interim.
I appreciate that, Sue. We'll let the mechanisms of communications run with the county's regular mechanisms, and then we'll also just have the library use their mechanisms as well. And then, and that does go out to the newspaper.
I will just say, it's going to be very difficult. Newspaper publishes usually Friday, and so it wouldn't go out until next Friday.
Right.
Which is the day we're talking about closing. So, the board has its pleasure. If you would desire to have more time, then we could do a posting. I just don't want to tell you that it's going to be published in the newspaper, because it won't be published in the newspaper if you want to close next week.
I think keeping it general to what is reasonable in the timeframe, with as broad a reach as we can, spread the word, everybody that's here, right, too, without jeopardizing the expediency of that timeframe. So, the advice would be to meet on Thursday of the week following the holiday, for a special meeting to vet the candidates. Two or three, but if there are more, you get five. Then, we will handle the embarrassment of riches with joy, right? A letter of interest satisfies me. Your description of the process similar to what it took for us to get onto the board satisfies me in terms of expressing why you're interested. How do we, how do the rest of us feel? Because I'm just one of us.
I would be comfortable with a higher number of candidates. I don't think it's a huge deal that we have a specific or low number. And I agree with Jessica that the, a similar, similar, the, something similar to what we did to apply to be on this board. Sounds appropriate.
So, expression of interest, invitation to internal, invitation to the community. One piece that we have not addressed that you'd asked us for, Kim, is compensation. We are going to need to use HR's expertise, I believe, in this, because you know what you have done in the past for interim. You may end up with a county employee that's taking on additional responsibilities. You might have somebody internal, or you may have somebody that needs a different situation, like a 1099 or some other mechanism. Since we are not necessarily privy to all of those, we may need to look to you for some suggestions, given the candidates that we get. It's something that HR did for us in the last go-round of this, being able to give us some salary advisement. And I think that because, while we are holding the budget and reviewing the budget, we don't necessarily hold all of the HR tools for hiring that you do, and may not have the clarity that you do.
Madam Chair, my recommendation, having had some time to think about it, will be that the open call, as well as the letter of interest, will include a section saying, "If you are requesting compensation, be part of it," that they state that. That way, for example, if it was an internal candidate who says, "Well, you know, I'm going to be taking on these additional duties. I'd want to be compensated at the director..." Whatever they want to do that, then that could be included with it. Whereas, if it was someone who said, "I'm willing to just do it on a voluntary basis," they could also express that, and it doesn't...
I don't have any desire to have a volunteer. But then, there's no accountability. If we're going to hire a volunteer, let them hire him, because if he stays a volunteer, if it doesn't work out okay in the long, we can have somebody that we can count on over the years and things like that. Okay, so Sue, I'm going to go through these. You don't have to say the last word.
Don't worry, I won't. Trustee Segura indicated a preference for someone who does take on a salary, though I think that it is appropriate to mention that we have filled the interim role in a volunteer basis in the past with good results. Not forever, but for some of the bridge work. So, I think that, in my mind, this interim position, if we have good candidates that are willing to volunteer, or if we have good candidates that do want a salary, I think that we can open it up, hear what they have to say, and then make that decision with advisement at a later time. But, others can say that, too. Just making sure that you got into the record, Sue.
Well, I've worked with volunteers, and everything's peachy keen for two weeks, and then they don't want to do it anymore, because there's too much pressure, or they don't have the time. I think we hire somebody, compensate them, and then get going.
So, again, from trustee Segura, a strong preference to the accountability that comes with a salary. And I think that that's good, strong advisement on your part, but I also think, and I think that that's fair, but I think we've got a lot of situations we might be dealing with here. What do you have to say, Maddie?
I'm hoping for clarification from just Joe and Kim also. Do you both feel it would be appropriate to leave the compensation aspect to sort of the end, when we are having a conversation with, you know, the final candidate or a final couple of candidates?
Yes, that would be my intention with what we put in the form, was that they would express what their compensation desires were, and that way, when you go to make your decision, you're informed as to what the person who's expressed an interest is desiring.
I would have to agree that I think compensations would be the way to go, and not just asking for somebody to volunteer their time to operate and manage the library, because there is a great responsibility that we're asking them to do, and to bring, and they're going to be dealing with the budget. They're going to be dealing with the staff. And I do agree that we need to have some kind of compensation for the interim director.
I agree with trustee Swirzick and trustee Segura here in this way, that we do want to compensate people that are doing good work for us. We do want to take very seriously the hours that they spend in the benefit of the county and the library. I just, in my mind, there may be some complicating factors if we are taking from internal to the county on whether or not they can take on additional salary for these kinds of roles, what is regular in there. And so, I'm absolutely comfortable opening it up and saying, "These are the things that we are going to want to do," and as we see candidates that might be good fits for us, evaluate that situation on the ground with what they bring to us. Because if they are in a position where they could really serve and take seriously the role and be able to assist us, but, you know, they're already a county employee that, for whatever purpose, they do not want to take on that additional for a benefit package complication, or for permissions from their own supervisor, we don't want to tell them that they can't offer support if we think that they're a good candidate. So, I think I'm comfortable with the expression of value there that we've made here. Leave that negotiable, and then evaluate when we have candidates in hand.
So, do you need a motion, then, Jessica? Because I just can't go with somebody doing it volunteer.
Okay.
You know? This is a huge responsibility, and we get somebody that volunteers, and next thing you know, I'm done with it.
Okay.
It's not worth it. So, I make a motion that we compensate the interim librarian.
I get you, Sue. I'm going to roll you back from that specific motion for a half-second, because we have the larger thing of doing this hire altogether. So, I think...
You're just putting it in the packet, then?
I think, are there other discussion items that we have not yet covered? Are there other questions or concerns that I am leaving on the table? Have we given you enough to work with? Have we answered our questions and concerns?
The only other thing I would have to, that I want to say, is that I don't think we should directly lean to somebody that has any library experience. I think as an interim director, and can be any kind of management, that's been in management, that has that qualifications, that has managed people, that has managed some kind of organization or business, because I think that's, for one, it's going to limit our options. Two, I think it gives us a wider, a wider of prospects out there that we can, a bigger pool of applicants that we can choose from. I know that we want to find some that has some library experience, but I think at that time, if that person that has that library experience wants to apply for the director position, I think, when that goes out, I think, given, I think we just need to have that bigger pool, instead of just focusing... just need to have that bigger pool instead of just focusing right on somebody that has good writing skills or that knows a library. I just, I think we have to have that more broad spectrum.
Okay. And, and that's well placed. I, I think that there are a lot of people that could service in a lot of ways. It also speaks to some of the pieces of the core of this job that I think that we could articulate by the interim director coming in to be responsible for managing and maintaining the stable operations of the library and its service to the community. If we can point to and say, as described in the job description, but there are many parts of this job description that we would not want to tie somebody to, you know, staying abreast of library trends and current technologies for, for libraries and archives. Those sorts of things are probably not the core of what we want to do. We are most interested now in supporting, managing, and maintaining stable operation and supporting the staff in being able to do that. Because our focus is very management-driven, yeah, there's a bunch of people that could do it. I also think communication and, and articulation are going to be pretty important here. Upholding point of contact for county needs are, are going to be important here because they're going to be serving in that role and, and helping show up at the meeting and meet there, you know?
Well, and, and I, can I talk now? Yes?
Sure. Go ahead.
This person's going to be the face of the library until we hire somebody.
Sure.
And past history, the community is going to look for somebody that's not just volunteering, that's stepping up and has had some managing, I don't know, but we have to be real careful who we put in there.
I understand. We want to make a good balance of care in our responsibility and concern for the staff that are there. We want to make sure that we can, we can get somebody that's a good fit. For those that may have struggled to hear Sue through the microphone, she is praising that community aspect, that face of the library aspect that this individual will have to embody. So we will want somebody with strong communication skills that can do that well and maintain the, the relationships and the reputational aspects of this while they're doing the maintenance of management. I, I am imagining that our public record can be used a, a little bit as a tool for pulling some of those articulation points. I might sit with Pam in the recording to see if I can harvest some of these from the conversation to help assist Kim in this, just so that there's a little bit of just guiding pieces as you put out the call. But being able to say, we are seeking somebody who will step into an interim role to maintain the stable operation of our library in an interim director position, as described here and other duties as design, as assigned, you know, can help us kind of get this out. Is that enough?
I think it's important that we have a timeline too.
Of course, we do.
Because if I'm going to call a couple people that I know that could step up and do it, I'm going to say, hey, we only want you for three months.
Okay, so we'll embed that, we'll embed that in the motion. The timeline that we have discussed thus far is posting tomorrow, on Friday, holding it open for a week, taking down the posting at the end of Friday next week, so that would be the 5th of July. And then we will meet in special meeting on Thursday of the week following July. We'll look at the dates in a second. Does that feel comfortable to you, Sue?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And you were, you were about to say something, Kim, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I think I have a good enough grasp of what you're looking for in the interim position because we're doing it as a call, like a, like a board member. I don't need as many details on this, so, thank you.
I agree. I, I think it gives us a flexible mechanism. We can put out preference points. This is public meeting. We can, we can make sure that as we start to reach out to people, we're using this as a guiding way of describing, and we have the backbone of the job description. Do we feel comfortable as a board?
Jessica, if I could say one thing, unless my phone is lying to me, the 4th of July is on Friday. So it would be Friday to Thursday, because I don't think we can ask for applicants on a holiday.
Thank you for catching me, Sari. I don't know whether I'm coming or going without the calendar in front of me, so as a board, do we, do we hold until, hold it open until the 7th, which is a Monday? Or do we pull it one day early and pull it down on the 3rd?
If you pull it one day early, you're not going to get the news papers.
We may not get in the newspapers anyway, Sue, given the timeline, but we are going to use every communication path that we can without jeopardizing our timeline.
Madam Chair, I won't be here on the 10th, any, on that Thursday anyways. So if we leave it to the 7th, then we're looking at possibly the 11th or that following Monday to have a board meeting, if that were-
Is the 11th an amenable date for our other trustees? Sari, are you available on the 11th of July?
I am available on the 11th.
Are you, Maddy?
I am available on the 11th.
All right. So I think that we'd have a quorum on that day. Sue, are you available on the 11th?
As long as I, as far as I know, I am.
All right. I understand. It's, it's tough season to be trying things like this, but we will do the best we can. I am also available. So let's go ahead and, and do that timeline as described. We'll hold it open until the 7th. We'll have our special board meeting on the 11th.
Madam Chair, too, I just want to make a, I want to make sure that we have in the record that we don't put a time, we don't put a end date on the interim. It'll, the end date will be the day that we hire, that we hire, or when the newly hired direct, director starts.
Correct. And I, I appreciate that clarification on there. Again, as, as we've discussed, we have no control over how well the search goes for that director. We want to make sure that we have left as much flexibility as possible in that description of the interim position. I think that if, if I could just, you know, to sum up, we are intending to put out a call for, for people who are interested in serving as the interim director of the library. We are putting out an invitation for anybody internal to the library to, to let us know if they feel like they would like to be a part of that. We are looking for people that have strong managerial and supervisory capacities, but also that would feel like they could serve us as the face of communication and reputation for the library. Our primary concern being stable operations and support of current staff. Compensation will be, is, is something that we are definitely invested in providing for people. We want to be able to honor the work that is done, and we, we want to be able to compensate quality work from our community. But we will make a decision on what that compensation will be under the advisement of HR and at, as we have found that correct candidate. Our timeline would be to post tomorrow, to take that post down on the 7th, and to come back, convene, and look at candidates on the 11th. Did I miss anything in that description?
Question that I have, the board can't look at candidates in open meetings unless you have to know, right, Mr. Sanford?
That is correct, Sue. Not to, not to pretend that I am Joe, nor do I play him on TV, but he, he did articulate it in that way. So any candidate coming in at this point, Sue's question for, for those I saw that you couldn't hear, she was, she was concerned that candidates that we look at in that special meeting will be subject to open meeting law. And so that as we discuss, as we talk to them to determine fit, we want to make sure that they are aware that it is a public meeting, that we will be discussing that in.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I just give you, ask you to give me a time for that meeting on the 11th?
What time would we have the use of the room, Pam?
It's open all day.
Excellent. There's 3 o'clock suit.
3 o'clock works for me.
3 o'clock works for me as well. All right.
Yeah, it works for me too. And I have a question. The initial screening will be done by Kim, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
So HR will, will manage some of that for us and bring us some strong candidates. Okay. So if I could get a motion to what we have just described, to the process as described?
I'll make a motion to approve the process of finding an interim director that we have been talking about.
I have a motion from Sari to approve that process as we have articulated here. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. So we have a second from trustee Swirzek. All those in favor of that process, say aye.
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 Aye. We have a consensus, and the motion carries. Excellent. Good work, everybody. I think that five years just went off my life on that one, and we will persist with that. The next item on our agenda is likened to it, we, we need to have consideration and possible action regarding the discussion, direction, and approval of the next steps for appointing and hiring the Churchill County Library Director. As described, and, and I'm going to call out to Kim on this too, to correct me, but as described, we will post that position with haste and proceed with that national search, very like what we did in the last round, correct?
If we get the position posted up next week, I have estimated, leaving it open for three weeks so we can collect a good amount of candidates, then we will do the pre-screening of the applicants, and then make the recommendations to the trustees of the top candidates. Then we'd be setting up the interviews and contacting the candidates for interview, which can take another week or so depending on folk's schedules. And then we would have another meeting for you to select the candidate with, with interviews like we did last time. I don't know if you were all part of that process last time.
Most of us were part of the, of the interview, the final interview process. I, I think Maddy was not yet on the board at that point.
I did observe.
Yeah.
Many of the meetings that were involved.
Couple of, of questions for, for this. Confirm that it is, it is a nationwide search. We are going to be reaching far beyond our state, you know, we'll, we'll put it out there on the web and whatever other communication resources you've traditionally used to do that.
We can, so we'll go out on our traditional online hiring places, Indeed, Career Finder, that sort of thing, so that would make it national. We would also post locally in papers if that's what you wanted to do. And then we could also do, I know last time there was advertisements in the International Library Association, but I'm not sure how many candidates came back to us from that, so.
Yeah, I, I don't recall the breakdown of where the candidates came from, but all of those, I, I think that those are all appropriate places to go. The other question that I have is length of search. I know that we want to be timely here, but I also think that, as much as I want to be timely, I also want to be effective. This sort of search is, is something that we don't want to have to repeat very often. And so I'd, I'd rather have a slightly longer period of time in order to get a, a better pool of candidates and to have that out there pulling eyes in a better way. But I also know that I am not the only member of this board. So what do you guys think?
I agree with you, Jessica.
So trustee Segura, for those of you that aren't right next to the phone for her, she also agrees with a, a lengthened timeframe. I think the last time we had it, it was for, was it a six-week poll? Or was it a four-week poll?
I think four weeks, I think four weeks would be more reasonable. We don't want it out there so long that we start to lose people either.
Understood. I'll put it to-
I would agree with that. The longer, I think by the going, I think four weeks is adding that extra week during a full month.
I agree that four weeks sounds reasonable. Sari, do you have an opinion on the length of the advertisement?
My opinion is, I believe what you said, Jessica. I want to be timely, but I want to be effective too. So I wish we could just say four weeks, but if that doesn't work, then maybe give it a little bit longer. But I think four weeks hopefully is sufficient enough time for good candidates to apply.
I think that the, that 30 days that the four weeks would imply is pretty standard for something like this. The language of open until filled, so that we could leave it open if we didn't feel like we had enough candidates. I, I don't anticipate that. We had a lot of candidates last time. But that allows us to not have to take it down. And I, I think that that gets, gets us a, a best-case balance between expediency and, and really doing our due diligence here. Because I don't want to do something where we're shorting that search to the extent that we are limiting the quality of our candidates here. I think we want to make sure that we've got somebody that really serves us well for as long as we can have them. In terms of the tool, I am comfortable using the job description that went out for the last one. It has been revised and updated. It articulated our, our values, and I, I think that it still does. I think that in, in the interest of expediency, using this tool allows us to post it. Is there anything in the current job description that we have questions about or concerns or any other differences of opinion there?
I, I agree, and I think the four weeks would be sufficient.
So trustee Segura indicated agreement that the job description is adequate and the four weeks is sufficient.
I do, Madam Chair, I, I agree with that.
I agree also on both points.
How do you feel, Sari?
Um, I haven't seen the job description, and I like to read things, but I am sure it looks fine, so I will agree.
I appreciate that. Sari, I, I know you're in a hard spot because you're out of town right now. What, what I can do is I can, I can send the copy that I have along to you. I saw it again in meeting when Kim brought it in, so you, you're down a step. Madam Chair, I will send that to her so that you guys aren't communicating.
Oh, I appreciate that, Pam. Thank you for keeping us honest. So Pam's going to send that along to you, Sari.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah. So I think that in terms of the mechanism of what we had done in the past, the, the way that the job search went last time is we put out the call, Carol, who was serving as interim director at the time, so Carol Lloyd, and Chris Spross, and did you zip, sit in on that? So Zip, as a representative of the CLA, sat in and vetted those candidates and came back to the board with five that had made the cut. We are down an interim director, so we are- We are down an interim director, so we are down one set of eyes to vet. But if, if the CLA, if Zip is willing to serve in that role, and if we have a set of eyes that we could trust and identify, that would give us a mechanism that I thought yielded us some good candidates. Does anybody have any suggestions or alternatives on how we do this?
Madam Chair, I, I don't have any suggestions, but the only, the only suggestion I guess I would have is that we just follow what, or have the, have HR, the county, follow the same mechanism as we did last time and, and just let, let them do their process of how they did it and then bring it back to us just like before.
I, I appreciate that comment from trustee Swirzek. I think that if we are moving as quickly as we're hoping to with the interim director, we would have that person identified. So we would have a member of CLA, a member, an interim director, and HR vetting through the qualifications to find some good candidates. If we do not identify somebody in that timeframe, I think that in, we will know that in the special meeting and we can make an adjustment if we need to make an adjustment. But approving that mechanism of, of job search, posting it for the four weeks, using the current tool, having HR and the two identified individuals vetting those and coming back with a number of candidates for us to review, and then the board does that final interview that allows us to do our due diligence without pulling the candidates in an untimely fashion into open meeting and, and some of those other things that we complicate as we try to vet. We did receive a very helpful reminder or refresher on how to do these kinds of searches and interviews from, from legal before we did it. I think that those sorts of things are always really helpful. We have plenty of time to do that, but I, I think that that meets our needs in a lot of ways. Is there anything that I'm missing or anything that you're missing from us so that you can move towards a post?
No, that is, that is good. I can reach out to Zip and Diane and set up the review panel. When we get closer.
Okay. So just as a sum up so that we can do, do this again, we're going to post the job description starting early next week, Monday, or early next week is what you'd said. So we're going to use the current job description or the job description that we had used in the, the last go-round. We will have you, Zip from CLA, and the incoming interim director vet candidates for us and provide us with a number of qualified candidates that is appropriate. And we will, as board, do the final interviews. Is there anything that I am missing there in timeline or description of process? Okay, so can I get a motion of the process as described?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion. That, the motion, or I'll make a motion that the new, that the new library director hiring process stays the same as before with county HR.
Sue seconds it. I'm just gonna, for, for the record, we've got the motion that that process as described and timeline as described is strong.
Oh, you want to amend it to the, amend the motion to add that the timeline is four weeks.
Thank you. And Sue, does that still sit well with you for a second? Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, the motion carries. Okay, thanks so much, Kim. We appreciate you. Last item of business, and Jay, I, I really appreciate your patience as we worked through that. I know that we needed you for this last piece as well. We have consideration and possible action regarding an update on the library's schedule and hours, including possible action to ensure the library maintains the current schedule and hours, or possible action to reduce or modify the library hours and schedule. This comes to us because we are now in a difference of staff number and we want to make sure that we are providing strong service, but also safety. So Jay, I'd asked Jay to work with the staff of the library and provide us a few suggestions based on the number of people that we have. Would you like to describe what you need from us on hours, Jay?
Sure. So right now, we only have one full-time person who is working on Mondays. So it would, we would either need to cut those hours on Monday or close on Monday or close on Saturday somehow so we can make it so we have at least full-time, two full-time people or at least two people all the time in the library.
So just to parse that, we are currently open six days a week serving the public. Our, our procedure and our policy is to keep two people at that desk at the, at, at all times so that if somebody needs to go get lunch or run to the bathroom or do any of these other things, there's, there's always someone to back them up. We.
Yes, and, and it doesn't have to be two full-time people. It's just right now on Mondays, we only have a full-time person and a part-time person who works part of the day. So we would have only one person on Monday, the beginning of the day.
Correct, and so while we work diligently to get an interim director in, which would give us another body and, and more support, and while we work to hire the positions that we're down and, and continue on the process that we knew that we were going to need to be doing, what I'm hearing is that you need the support of at least a half of Monday closure, or as you'd said, a Monday closure or a Saturday closure. Can, I, I know that we are unified in wanting to be able to serve the public as fully as we can and to keep those hours there, especially since it's our summer. Can you give us an indication of days of the week that get the most public coming through?
Um, it really varies, but Monday and Saturday are usually quieter days, although the people who can come on Saturday are not generally people who can come during the week. So my thought would be to have that day stay open, especially because people were wanting more, when we did our survey for the strategic plan, people wanted more hours outside of the weekdays nine to five so that they could have more options for coming in after school or after work. So that Saturday seems to be a day that's important, not that Monday isn't, but those two seem to be our, our lower days as far as patrons coming in. But again, it, it really varies.
And other, other questions that I'd have, you indicated that you have your part-time person for part of the day on Monday. Could we do a half-day on Monday rather than a full closure?
I don't see why not.
Okay, okay. Go ahead.
When does the part-time person work on Mondays?
The part-time person right now works one to six. That could change, but we're also down a page, so that person needs to be spread out a little more during the week than, than just working all day one day.
So does it make, so if we just were open half a day in the afternoon on Monday, would that, in your opinion, would that work?
I believe so.
I.
Jay?
Oh, go ahead. Hit us, Sari.
Jay, I was wondering if we were to cut down on hours, will that affect people's hours? Will they not be the full-time people? Will they be able to get their max amount of 40 hours a week? And will the part-time people still be able to get their max amount of hours?
Um, that's kind of, I think that's a question for the county. As I was told, unless there's a special case, people are not allowed in the library by themselves.
Right.
So it might be, but this is kind of a special case too. So it could be that, you know, our Monday person is there while we're not open getting some things done and then opens up in the afternoon when that part-time person can come.
That was a good question, Sari. I had another question, and it may take a little while to figure this out, but if, if you have some full-time employees that are willing to take on an overtime role or additional hours, is that something that you, from your angle, feel like you might have? In having this conversation a few times this week, there, there were differences in, in this, but like approaching overtime to get a few more hours out of people so that they could cover and make sure that full-time employees could get their full 40.
That, that's another question that would be for the county probably, to find out if overtime is available and when they'll be able to do it.
To my understanding, you were able to make this week through Saturday in part because the, you had that other employee for a little bit longer, the resignation hadn't taken hold, but also in part because you were able to spread your hours across and then starting Monday, you need this intervention in order to be safe. So I, I feel like, if you feel like a half-day on Monday, and I, I also kind of support that half-day being in the morning rather than in the afternoon because heat of day means that you might have more patrons coming in for cooling and other spaces. I mean, we, we do a lot of service in that library. That that might be able to cover you while we hustle and, and work hard to try to get you another hand on deck. So being able to approve that reduction of hours for a number of three or four weeks, would three do you? If we keep moving, have our special meeting on the 11th and get somebody in, would that give you enough leeway for us to work with?
With the timeline that you've presented here, yes, I believe it would.
Okay. So does anybody have any other questions or concerns that they'd like to put?
I, I just want to ensure that any motion that we do put together for this does make clear that this re, this lowering of, of library hours is temporary.
I, I completely support where your head and your heart is on that. This is a special circumstance. We are invested in keeping the library open, but we also want to keep the library and the library's staff safe. So this feels like we are supporting the schedule with as few alterations as possible. But a three-week library reduction of hours with that morning half closure, so the, the seven to noon closure, is that correct, Jay?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I also don't, should we not, we can always change the hours, but if we don't hire somebody, then we got to come back to the board. So why don't we just leave it open until, leave the hours set until we hire the, the new interim director and then we can change the hours at the time we hire?
I personally would be more comfortable with setting a timeline. We will be meeting again within three weeks and I think that would be the time to extend it if we need to. I would be more comfortable if it did expire and then we could choose to extend it.
But with people's schedules, scheduling people at the library, it's harder if you're going to give them, if we're, if we have, if we don't change it or we come back to the board in three weeks, it's just going to be on a Friday and you have to have that scheduled for the next week for people. So I would say it just is easier for scheduling purposes until we get a new interim director before, to set a new schedule.
I, I hear what you're saying. I hear what both of you are saying and I understand the, the logic behind both of these things. I think that we can, we can make a good middle line here. We can support the fact that we, we are committed to this being temporary by putting some date on this, but because we have our regular scheduled board meeting on the 24th, we can agendize this as a revisit and reevaluate as needed. So if we put ourselves in there to have this reduction last through that period of time for a reevaluation on the 24th, that gives you four weeks, Jay, to work with. That gives you some, some leeway and some protection. That gives us a chance to talk to county, to make best efforts to hire that interim and to have a nice hard deadline of when to revisit this without, without really changing our schedules, because we will be here. So if, if you feel comfortable with that as a solution, half-days, Monday mornings, then let's go ahead and make that motion and get you what you need so that you can keep operating.
Madam Chair, if I, if I might make one comment.
Yes.
There was two questions that were asked specifically of the county. One related to overtime, so that is within the discretion of this board as to authorization. It's a budgetary concern. You obviously are having some savings in personnel costs at this time. And so if the board wants to authorize, Jay, to use whatever overtime be necessary to allow for those expanded hours, I would suggest that you make that part of this motion now. And then the second question that was related to the county was, is there a requirement for the library to have two people in it? Legally, no, but it is my strong advice that we have at least two people there. That provides for the safety of our employees as well as potentially members of the public who come and utilize those services. That's the basis of that policy. So I, I do recommend that you continue that.
I appreciate that enrichment. I think that that really does help us if, if there are members of the library staff that would like to seek overtime. You're right, we, we can roll that into the motion. I had just given this note that, that I was kind of handed here. I have one more question. If we have volunteers that meet the requirements or background checks of the county for safety, can we use a volunteer personnel to fill those hours? So for example, if we had a willing county employee to man the desk for half a day, is that within our purview? And that's for any of the experts that could answer that.
Maybe, so just so that I'm clear on exactly what the question is. The idea is you would have one paid library personnel there and then one additional volunteer who is willing to be at the, at the building to satisfy the need for having two persons.
Correct. With the addition that that, that volunteer be appropriately vetted so that public safety is covered, yes.
Correct. But if that's acceptable from, from the legal angle, yes.
Okay, so we do have, we do have a volunteer who is a county employee that can cover those Mondays. Jay, if we have a county employee that you've worked with before, willing to cover those Mondays, are, are you able to stay open those Monday mornings?
I believe so, but I also believe that if overtime is being offered, we probably have an employee who would take overtime to be there on that Monday.
Excellent. So do you feel confident that we can proceed on those two solutions? That we can pursue overtime for library employees and we can also use a county employee volunteer to cover that desk? Do you need us to redact hours today?
I don't, I don't believe so.
Okay.
If some, you know, if something happens, if we have those, those overtime, if we have approval for overtime, I think we can probably cover it.
Okay. Did you have something that you wanted to say, Sue?
No, no, I think that's a great idea.
Okay, so Sue, Sue concurs that, that this will cover this. And so in, in terms of all of that informational conversation, which I thought was really helpful and, and clarifying for me to kind of see what you need. helpful and clarifying for me to kind of see what you need, I don't know that we need a motion for that, because we've just considered it. Or do we want a motion to support those two solutions as described?
My recommendation, if you're open to it, would be to make the motion as an optional basis, right? So you would give the authority to close it in the event that neither of those options worked out.
Okay.
So if staff was unwilling to do it, or, and the volunteer said, you know, I actually can't make it, then you don't have to potentially come and try and wrangle a special meeting in two days.
I, as ever, I am deeply grateful for the legal representation and the advice that you give. So I think that the articulation of that motion would sound like using the solution of the county volunteer and the offer of overtime. We authorize the library staff to act on those, but we also authorize the library staff to close the library during that Monday morning as described, if necessary, if those two solutions do not work out, and that we will revisit this on the regularly scheduled board meeting on the 24th. So this stipulation is for that period of time. Does that cover everything?
I believe so, yeah.
All right, so I'm willing to entertain a motion. However you want to make it.
I will make a motion that we will have the option of overtime, or having a volunteer from the county, or somebody who has been vetted for the public safety, to come in and help with, cover the hours on Monday morning. And if neither of those two options work, then we will be allowed to close for Monday morning.
Can I ask for a clarification? So are we giving the library a recommendation for the order in which they use these tools? Or is it just they have the choice to use these tools however they see fit?
Appreciate the clarification there. To my understanding, we are giving the library staff the latitude to solve the problem of being short on that Monday morning by putting into place one or another of the two interventions as described. They can either use the volunteer or overtime. If neither of those will work, we give them the latitude to close on those Monday mornings with appropriate communication to the public. And we give the time period of up until the regularly scheduled board meeting of the 24th, where we will review this, see if that situation still persists, and take the temporary interventions off. Does that cover what you were hoping for in your motion, Sari?
Yes.
Okay. Does that clarify? Excellent.
Yes.
Okay, so do we have a second on that?
I will second that.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, so Maddie was just a little quicker than you, Sue, so...
That's fine, that's fine.
Excellent. So we have a motion from Sari and a second from Maddie. Do we have any other discussion? Okay, so all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. The motion carries. All right, thanks, Jay. Okay, so we have come through our agenda. We are to a place where we can take public comment. Do we have any members of the public that would like to make a public comment at this time?
Zip Hovum, 3618 Bottom Road, Fallon, also the president of the Strategic Library Association. Just a couple of quick notes. I'd like to thank the Board of Trustees for going through the process on the strategic plan. I think losing your library director, who is supposed to execute said strategic plan, is a little bit painful, but having gone through the process to put one in place, we have now a five-year plan and a very good start of the place to have a director coming in, look at what's expected of them, and figure out how to move forward with that. So I think that will help in the job search piece. Secondly, on the CLA side, our Books, Bites &amp; Beverages fundraiser, which was slated for August 8th, we've postponed to an open-ended date. We don't know. We'd like to do it in the fall, hopefully before we run into Christmas festivities. But if we cannot do that this year, if we are still working through new director hire and a little bit of turmoil in the staffing, it's probably fine, from the CLA standpoint, not to do that fundraiser. From a messaging standpoint, in a perfect world, what we'd really like to do is have a new director in place, have a date, and then use the Books, Bites &amp; Beverages outreach event to introduce the new director to the community. So we look forward to working with the Board of Trustees in that regard.
I appreciate that, Zip. I think that the strategic plan has been a really healthy process, and it articulates from the library, from the community, and from the board where our focal points lie. And so I think that it is a great communication tool to our community, and also to any candidates that are coming in. And I also appreciate the information about Books, Bites &amp; Beverages. That sounds very reasonable. Thank you.
And I look forward to the opportunity to help with the job search. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for being willing. Do we have any other public comment at this time? Seeing none, seeing no eager takers. I appreciate everybody that came to be a part of this, and we will adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.